The sunshine has been beautiful. Lord, we all have people around us that love and care for us, and we give you thanks for that gift. Tonight, God, we have the privilege of being a part of a representative form of government. And, God, there are millions of people who don't have this privilege, so we give you thanks for this privilege. Tonight, Lord, we're protected by firefighters and police officers who willingly place themselves in harm's way because common folk like us need them. We ask, Lord, for your protection to be with them in every step of what they do. Tonight, God, we know that there are challenges facing our country, our state, and even our city, and, Lord, we thank you for those, because, Lord, there are no advances that have taken place in humankind without there being problems to be solved. And so, Lord, we're conscious of the fact that when problems come, selfishness can come, and the worst can come out of us, so we pray, Lord, for your protection against the worst in each one of us that can harm others. We pray, God, for your wisdom and direction that the best might come out of us as we reach out to one another and hold hands and walk forward together, as we think about ways to solve problems. And, Lord, for these ladies and gentlemen that lead our government, I thank you, God, for the sacrificial leadership that they offer. I'm sure, Lord, that there are thousands of hours that are invested on our behalf, and, Lord, we offer them thanks for that. We pray, God, that you'd watch over their families. We pray, God, that you would give us courage of conviction, and also, Lord, the courage of compassion in all that we do. In the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior and our Lord, we do pray. Amen.
Madam Clerk, if you will give reading to the ordinances entitled a second reading.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance amending articles 1-11, 8-21A, 8-21B, 8-21D, 8-21O, 8-22A, 8-22B, 8-22D, 5, 8, 12, 16, 17, 18, and 19, 8-23A, 8-23B, and 8-23D, 34 of the zoning ordinance to create an adaptive reuse and to make adaptive reuse projects principal permitted uses in the wholesale and warehouse business B4 zone, light industrial I-1 zone and heavy industrial I-2 zone. Number two, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security, which grant funds are in the amount of $22,000 federal funds, are for the development of an all-hazard disaster preparedness plan for the 2010 World Equestrian Games, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 59 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number three, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, which grant funds are in the amount of $49,126 federal funds, are for continuation of the Parent Resource Center for a Bright Future, a Healthy Tomorrow's Project at the Family Care Center, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $100,874 as local match, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 63 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number four, an ordinance amending Section 2152 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of claims adjuster grade 115E in the Division of Risk Management and creating one position of claims adjuster grade 115E in the Department of Law transferring the incumbent in appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 60. Number five, an ordinance amending Section 2152 of the Code of Ordinances creating two positions of program manager senior grade 120E in the Division of Environmental Policy. Number six, an ordinance amending Section 2152 of the Code of Ordinances creating two positions of engineering technician senior grade 113E, abolishing one position of engineering technician grade 111N, and abolishing one position of engineering aide senior grade 109N in the Division of Water Quality and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 61. Number seven, an ordinance amending Section 2152 of the Code of Ordinances creating one position of administrative specialist senior grade 112N in the Division of Environmental Policy and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 62. Number eight, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute and submit a grant application to the Kentucky Justice Cabinet to provide any additional information requested in connection with this grant application, and to accept this grant if the application is approved, which grant funds are in the amount of $69,570 federal funds under the Violence Against Women Act program. We are for continuation of the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner Program, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $23,190 as a local match appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 64 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number nine, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Department of Military Affairs, Division of Emergency Management, which grant funds are in the amount of $55,133 federal funds, are for the support of emergency preparedness activities in Lexington, Fayette County, the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $55,133 as a local match appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 65 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 10, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Office of 911 Coordinator Commercial Mobile Radio Service Board, which grant funds are in the amount of $177,015 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, are for expansion of the central Kentucky 911 network to include additional jurisdictions, Boyd, Casey, Garrett, Lincoln, Rockcastle, and Taylor Counties, the acceptance of which does not obligate the Urban County Government for the expenditure of funds and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 67 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 11, an ordinance amending Section 215 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of heavy equipment mechanic grade 111N and creating one position of heavy equipment technician grade 113E in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 66. Number 12, an ordinance amending Section 2152 of the Code of Ordinances creating one position of program manager senior grade 120E in the Division of Environmental Policy. And number 13, an ordinance amending certain of the budgets of Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 57.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion that we approve those ordinances? I have a motion by Councilmember Myers and a second by Councilmember Stennett. Is there any discussion? If not, we appear ready to vote. All in favor, please indicate by voting aye electronically. All opposed, please indicate by voting no electronically. And, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Crosby?
Yes.
Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes, ma'am. My monitor's down.
I'm sorry?
My monitor's down, so I can't vote electronically.
Okay, I'll take care of it. Thank you. Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stennett?
Aye.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
And Mr. Blues? Thank you.
Thank you. Those ordinances are approved. Madam Clerk, if you give reading to the ordinances entitled a first reading.
Ordinance number one, an ordinance changing the zone from a single-family residential R1C zone to a professional office P1 zone for 0.2259 net, 0.2604 gross acre for property located at 223 Pasadena Drive, John P. Elias. Number 15, an ordinance changing the zone from a planned neighborhood residential R3 zone to a neighborhood business B1 zone for 1.79 net, 3.66 gross acres for property located at 3380 Tate's Creek Road, a portion of subject to certain use restrictions imposed as condition of granting this zone change. Town Properties Asset Management Company. Number 16, an ordinance adding a neighborhood design character overlay ND1 zone for 134.50 net, plus or minus net 171.77 plus or minus gross acres to preserve existing neighborhood character for properties located at 310 through 395 Andover Drive, 201 through 299 Cassidy Avenue, odd addresses only, 300 through 356 Cassidy Avenue, 125 through 250 Chenault Road, 309 through 539 Shinnaway Road, 180 through 346 Cochran Road, 401 through 435 Cochran Road, odd addresses only, 1394 through 1506 Cochran Road, 300 through 377 Colony Boulevard, 951 through 1245 Cooper Drive, odd addresses only, 323 through 325 Cross Lane, 305 through 436 Dudley Road, 300 through 335 Duke Road, 340 through 360 Duke Road, even addresses only, 131 through 191 East Over Drive, 300 through 372 Garden Road, 201 through 505 Hart Road, 101 through 194 Louisiana Avenue, 100 through 165 Old Cassidy Avenue, 998 through 1144 Providence Lane, even addresses only, 1200 through 1237 Providence Lane, 303 through 440 Ridgeway Road, 300 through 315 and 340 Romany Road, 901 through 1015 Tate's Creek Road, odd addresses only, and 1405 through 1491 Tate's Creek Road, odd addresses only, Urban County Planning Commission. Number 17, an ordinance amending Section 2152 of the Code of Ordinances abolishing one position of social services coordinator grade 114E in the Department of Social Services and creating one position of social services coordinator grade 114E in the Division of Adult Services and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 69. Number 18, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with Mass Services of Bluegrass Incorporated for improvements to shelters serving homeless and runaway youth at a cost not to exceed an additional $3,800 in community development block grant funds and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 70.
Thank you very much.
Number 19, an ordinance creating and establishing a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise and providing for the placement of facilities for the generation, transmission, distribution, and sale of telecommunications services within the public right of way, compliance with the all applicable existing and future local laws and ordinances and regulations, incorporation by reference of the provisions of Section 253 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, KRS 136.600 et sequel, Chapter 17, 17B, and 17C of the Code of Ordinances Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government, and the applicable zoning laws, definitions, construction, installation, maintenance, and facility standards, separate cable franchise required for cable services, compliance with various national and state standards and regulations, materials and equipment quality, due regard for rights of government and others in performing work and the rights of way, placement of lights or signals, undergrounding of facilities in some instances, temporary moving of wires, tree trimming, additional performance guarantees of up to $200,000 on projects with construction costs exceeding $100,000, and indemnification and hold harmless provision, commercial general liability insurance policy consistent with the provisions of the Public Right of Way ordinance, compliance with non-discrimination and affirmative action requirements, notice of filing for a general base rate increase or transfer of control before the Public Service Commission, a three-year duration, no vested rights for installation or emplacement of facilities other than those provided in franchise or at law, notification of assignment with consent not to be unreasonably withheld, the following penalties recoverable for violations after a company has provided the opportunity to present evidence to the Commissioner of Public Works and Development or his designee with such decisions appealable to a court of competent jurisdiction, $500 a day for failure to complete construction projects by no later than the end of the franchise with the option of providing suitable performance bond or other protection to the government in lieu of such penalty, and $100 a day for failure to provide data and reports requested by government as required by the ordinance or for failure to timely pay the franchise fee or an itemized bill. A 100-day penalty appealable to a court of competent jurisdiction for failure to comply within 30 days to a council resolution directing compliance with a provision of the ordinance, nonwaiver, and continued performance and enforcement upon government's failure to insist on specific performance, the payment of penalties not an excuse for nonperformance system to be maintained in reasonable operating condition at all times, absent excusing condition or event, customer inquiries and business hours consistent with any Public Service Commission order, termination upon willful violations of the franchise, willful evasion of the provision of the franchise, fraud and deceit upon the government, and knowingly making material misrepresentations and procedures for terminating the franchise, 30 days advance written notice for foreclosure or judicial sale or lease termination involving all or part of company's facilities in Fayette County with notification to be treated as transfer or assignment. Government's right to cancel franchise 30 days after the appointment of a receiver or trustee unless certain conditions are met, sale at public auction of the franchise and due advertisement requirements thereon, written bids right to reject, payment of 5% of the estimated cost of the system unless the company already has sufficient facilities to provide the franchise services, and payment of $500 for advertisement and administrative costs with any excess amount exceeding actual cost to be returned to bidders within 30 days. Acknowledgement that Telecommunications Tax Act precludes collection of traditional franchise fee with an agreement to negotiate such a fee in good faith in the event that the act is found unlawful. Payment of permitting and inspection fees with right to seek tariff approval from the Public Service Commission, agreement to enter into good faith negotiations on a pole attachment agreement, additional construction and notification requirements for new providers or for certain substantial rebuilds or expansions of facilities. For additional performance and security requirements for construction by new providers, bids must accept the conditions of this ordinance and may include additional consideration payments. Violations of the franchise shall be conditioned for forfeiture, law of Kentucky applies, venue in Fayette County, no third-party rights, any unlawful provision is severable and franchise effective, and the council accepts the bids, all effective on date of passage. There's a motion for number 20?
Madam Clerk, could I get you to hold for just a moment? Commissioner asks you, have you gotten some resolution on those amendments on number 20? If you'll bear with us for just a minute, what we're trying to do is see whether or not we can avoid the necessity of giving it first reading twice, so hold on for just a moment, if you would, please. Are you ready? Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. On this item, a typographical error has occurred, and to correct that, we need to amend it, and I will read the correction. Section 14-98, parentheses, 4, has an error. Instead of saying KRS 61165, parentheses, 3, A1, R2, it should say KRS 61165, parentheses, A, R, parentheses, B. Thank you. And I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend. Item 20 is reflected in Dr. Stevens' motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Do you want me to read that one, too? Dr. Stevens?
A second motion, I move to amend item number 20 under the first reading ordinance to amend Sections 1497 to 14104 of the Code of Ordinances relating to smoking indoors to expand the definition of building and private organization to clarify public transportation building and to include Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government vehicles in the ordinance. This is, and I so move, these are items that we passed at the work session on Tuesday, but because of adhering to our proper procedures, it's thoughtwise to read this motion.
Is there a second? I have a second by Councilmember Beard. Any discussion? All in favor of that amendment, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
I need the motion, the first motion that Dr. Stevens read that changed the correct of the KRS so that I can make that correction before I read it. Thank you.
I'm glad Peggy's here. She knows this thing better than anybody. Santa knows it.
Okay, number 20 is amended. An ordinance amending Section 14-97 subsection 1 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to amend the definition of building to include structures with 40% or more of its perimeter permanently or temporarily enclosed. Amending Section 14-97 subsection 2 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to amend the definition of dwelling to include building. Amending Section 14-97 subsection 3 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to delete the definition for enclosed area and replace it with a definition for establishment and open to the public. Amending Section 14-97 subsection 4 of the Code of Ordinances relating to smoking indoors to amend the definition of private organization, to delete establishment and not be open to the public and be income tax exempt. Amending Section 14-97 subsection 5 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to amend the definition of retail tobacco store, changing 50% to 25%. Amending Sections 14-97, 6 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to amend the definition of smoke or smoking to include burning or carrying of a tobacco product. Amending Section 14-97, 7 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to delete the definition for tobacco warehouse and replace it with a definition for workplace and buildings or a portion thereof. Amending Section 14-98 subsection 1 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to prohibit smoking in an establishment, workplace, and public transportation vehicles. Amending Section 14-98, 1A of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to include a business within a dwelling. Amending Section 14-98, 1B of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to delete the word "in," add the word "rental," and move the remainder of Section B and Section C. Amending Section 14-98, 1C related to smoking indoors to allow the four exceptions for treatment of nicotine addiction by licensed healthcare professionals in independently ventilated rooms in hospitals, hospice, or nursing homes. Amending Section 14-98, 1D of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to allow an exception for a retail tobacco store. Amending Section 14-98, 1E of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to allow an exception for performance in a theatrical production and to delete the existing section. Amending Section 14-98, 1F of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to allow an exception for buildings used by a private organization not open to the public. Deleting Section 14-98, 1G of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors and a tobacco warehouse. Amending Section 14-98, 2 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to include building or establishment. Creating Section 14-98, 4 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors, making buildings or vehicles owned, leased, or operated by the Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government, subject to provisions of Sections 14-97 to 14-104. Amending Section 14-99, 1 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to include workplace. Amending Section 14-99, 2 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to apply to any building or workplace. Amending Section 14-99, 3 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to include ashtrays and establishments. Amending Section 14-99, 4 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to replace the word "dwelling" with "building," "establishment," "workplace," and "private organization." Amending Section 14-101 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to include workplace. Amending Section 14-101, A of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to add smoking materials. Amending Section 14-101, B of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to include all persons in control of a building or workplace to demand persons who refuse to stop smoking to leave the premises. Creating Section 14-101, C of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to allow refusal of services to persons who are smoking. Creating Section 14-101, D of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to allow persons in control of buildings and workplaces to take legal means to stop smoking in the premises. Amending Section 14-102 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to include building, establishment, and workplace. Creating Section 14-103 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors, exempting buildings and establishments, workplace, and private organizations covered in Section 14-98. Amending Section 14-101 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to allow enforcement of this subchapter by the Health Department. Amending Section 14-102, 1B of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to establish a one-year limit. Amending Section 14-102, 1C of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to establish a one-year limit. Deleting Section 14-102, 2 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors. Amending Section 14-104 of the Code of Ordinances related to smoking indoors to allow any person aggrieved by a violation of this section to apply for injunctive and/or other legal relief. Number 21, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a grant from the Kentucky Arts Council, which grant funds are in the amount of $5,000 Commonwealth of Kentucky funds, are for the park bench sculpture project, and the acceptance of which obligates the Urban County Government for the expenditure of $5,000 as a local match, appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 74 and authorizing the mayor to transfer unencumbered funds within the grant budget. Number 22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with Lexington Children's Theater Incorporated for implementation of the bully show and anti-gang juvenile outreach program at a cost not to exceed $6,779 and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 72. Number 24, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to the agreement with U.S. Geological Survey for the continuing and ongoing maintenance and operation of existing stream flow and precipitation gauges, and authorize an acceptance of the sum of $7,800 from ATS Construction for the cost of removal and replacement of gauges on Winchester Road, increasing the cost of the agreement from $86,910 to $94,710, at no additional cost to the Urban County Government, and appropriating funds pursuant to Schedule Number 71. 25, an ordinance of the Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Council of the Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government, one, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between the Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Airport Board as the leaseor and the Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government as the lesee relating to the issuance and sale of the amount not to exceed $85 million in aggregate principal amount of, A, Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Airport Board Variable Rate General Airport Revenue and Revenue Refunding Bonds 2008 Series A, Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government General Obligation, AMT; B, Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Airport Board Variable Rate General Airport Revenue and Revenue Refunding Bonds 2008 Series B, Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government General Obligation, non-AMT; and C, Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Airport Board Variable Rate General Airport Taxable Revenue Refunding Bonds 2008 Series C, Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government General Obligation, taxable, for the purpose of refunding of all the outstanding bonds issued by the Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Airport Corporation, and financing the cost of constructing qualified airport facilities, including runway relocation, taxiway realignment, terminal drive relocation, sanitary sewer improvements, and terminal renovations, constituting additions, extensions, and improvements to the existing airport facilities at the Bluegrass Airport in Fayette County, Kentucky, and 26. An ordinance amending certain of the budgets of the Lexington, Fayette, Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 68.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any motions? Councilmember Beard?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules and get...
improvements, and terminal renovations constituting additions, extensions, and improvements to the existing airport facilities at the Bluegrass Airport in Fayette County, Kentucky. And 26, an ordinance amending certain other budgets of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government to reflect current requirements for municipal expenditures and appropriating and reappropriating funds, Schedule Number 68.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any motions? Councilmember Beard.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules and give a second reading to Number 19 at the request of the administration.
Mayor, I would like to request likewise suspension of the rules to the purpose of giving second reading to Ordinance Number 25. Twenty-five.
I'll take that as a second and a friendly amendment to our motion to suspend. Any others? We have a motion then to suspend the rules for purposes of giving second reading to Items Number 19 and 25. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those no, motion carries. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance creating and establishing a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise in providing for the placement of facilities for the generation, transmission, distribution, and sale of telecommunications services within the public right-of-way, compliance with all applicable existing and future local laws and ordinances and regulations, incorporation by reference of the provisions of Section 253 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, KRS 136.60, chapters 17, 17B, and 17C of the Code of Ordinances Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, and the applicable zoning laws, definitions, construction, installation, maintenance, and facility standards, separate cable franchise required for cable services, compliance with various national and state standards and regulations, materials, and equipment quality due regard for rights of government and others performing and work of the right-of-way, placement of lights or signals, undergrounding of facilities in some instances, temporary moving of wires, tree trimming, additional performances, guarantees of up to $200,000 on projects with construction costs exceeding $100,000, and indemnification and hold harmless provision, commercial general liability insurance policy consistent with the provisions of the Public Right-of-Way Ordinance, compliance with nondiscrimination and affirmative action requirements, notice of filing for general base rate increase or transfer of control before the Public Service Commission, a three-year duration, no vested rights for installation or emplacement of facilities other than those provided in franchise or at law, notification of assignment with the consent not to be unreasonably withheld, the following penalties recoverable for violations after company has provided the opportunity to present evidence of the Commissioner of Public Works and Development or his designee, with such decisions appealable to a court of competent jurisdiction. $500 a day for failure to complete construction projects by no later than the end of the franchise with the option of providing suitable performance bond or other protection to government in lieu of such penalty, and $100 a day for failure to provide data and reports requested by government as required by the ordinance, or for failure to timely pay the franchise fee or an itemized bill. A $100 a day penalty appealable to a court of competent jurisdiction for failure to comply within thirty days to the council resolution directing compliance with a provision of the ordinance, non-wavier and continued performance and enforcement upon government's failure to insist on specific performance. The payment of penalties not an excuse for a non-performance system to be maintained in reasonable operating condition at all times, absent excusing condition or event, customer inquiries, and business hours consistent with any Public Service Commission order, termination upon willful violations of the franchise, willful evasion of the provision of the franchise, fraud, and deceit upon the government, or knowingly making material misrepresentations, and procedures for terminating the franchise. Thirty days advance written notice of foreclosures or judicial sale or lease termination involving all or part of company's facilities in Fayette County, with notification to be treated as transfer or assignment. Government's right to cancel franchise thirty days after the appointment of receiver or trustee unless certain conditions are met, sell at a public auction over the franchise or do it and do advertisement requirements thereon, written bids, right to reject payment of five percent of the estimated cost of the system unless the company already has sufficient facilities to provide the franchise services, and payment of $500 for advertisement and administrative costs with any excess amount exceeding actual costs to be returned to bidders within thirty days. Acknowledgement that Telecommunications Tax Act precludes collection of traditional franchise be with an agreement to negotiate such a be in good faith in the event that the act is found unlawful. Payment of permitting and inspection fees with the right to seek tariff approval from the Public Service Commission Agreement to enter into good faith negotiations on a poll attachment agreement. Additional construction and notification requirements for new providers for or for certain substantial rebuilds or expansions of facilities. Additional performance and security requirements for construction by new providers. Bids must accept the conditions of this ordinance and may include additional consideration payments. Violations of the franchise shall be conditioned for forfeiture. Law of Kentucky applies. Venue in Fayette County, no third-party rights, any unlawful provision severable, and franchise effective when the council accepts the bid, all effective on the date of passage. And Number 25, an ordinance of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Council of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government, 1, authorized and approved the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between the Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board as the leaseor and the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government as the lesee, relating to the issuance and sale of the amount not of an amount not to exceed $85 million in aggregate principal amount of: A. Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board Variable Rate General Airport Revenue and Revenue Refunding Bonds 2008 Series A. Lexington Fayette Urban County Government General Obligation, AMT. B. Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board Variable Rate General Airport Revenue and Revenue Refunding Bonds 2008 Series B. Lexington Fayette Urban County Government General Obligation, non-AMT. And C. Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Board Variable Rate General Airport Taxable Revenue Refunding Bonds 2008 Series C. Lexington Fayette Urban County Government General Obligation taxable for the purpose of refunding of all of the outstanding bonds issued by the Lexington Fayette Urban County Airport Corporation and financing the cost of constructing qualified airport facilities including runway relocation, taxi realignment, terminal driver location, sanitary sewer improvements, and terminal renovations constituting additions, extensions, and improvements to the existing airport facilities at the Bluegrass Airport in Fayette County, Kentucky.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve those two items?
Second.
Councilmember Blues has moved the adoption of those two items. Councilmember Stevens has seconded. Is there any discussion? Saying none, we'll proceed to vote. Those in favor of approving those items, please indicate by voting aye electronically. Those opposed, vote nay. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Crosby? Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
I got you. Ms. Dr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Stenit?
Ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Blues?
Yes.
Thank you.
Those ordinances are approved. We're now ready for the resolutions entitled to second reading. Madam Clerk.
A resolution accepting the bid of next-gen building supply establishing a price contract for ceiling tile supplemental for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 2, a resolution accepting the bid of Schroder-
Hold on, Mayor.
Councilmember Stenit.
Before you read Number 2, I have a motion. Motion to table Number 2 under Resolutions until the November 6, 2008 council meeting. So moved.
Thank you. Motion is to table Number 2 until November 6. Any discussion on the time at which that is being tabled? Saying none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of tabling Item Number 2 until November 6, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Number 3. A resolution accepting the bid of Superior Demolition Incorporated in the amount of $12,400 for the Gainesway Community Building demolition for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number 4, a resolution accepting the bid of LM Asphalte Partners Limited doing business as ATS Construction in the amount of $745,000 for the 2008 County Road resurfacing for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 5, a resolution accepting the bid of Radio Communication Systems, doing business as RCS Communications, establishing a price contract for communication system maintenance for the Division of Police. Number 6, a resolution accepting the bid of Traffic Control Products Incorporated establishing a price contract for traffic signal and control equipment supplemental for the Division of Traffic Engineering. Number 7, a resolution accepting the bid of Schiller Architectural Hardware, establishing a price contract for doors and steel hardware for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 8, a resolution accepting the bid of Filtemore Technologies LLC, establishing a price contract for central air filters for the Division of Community Corrections. Number 9, a resolution accepting the bid of Advanced Construction of Kentucky LLC and Bellows Painting LLC, establishing price contracts for painting services for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 10, a resolution accepting the bids of Advanced Construction of Kentucky LLC, CR Cable Construction Incorporated and Willhite Incorporated, establishing price contracts for underground electrical service installation for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number 11, a resolution accepting the bid of R&amp;L Cleaning Service, establishing a price contract for custodial services for Sales Road Campus for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 12, a resolution accepting the bid of Mary's Cleaning Service, establishing a price contract for custodial services for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 13, a resolution accepting the bid of Landmark Sprinkler Incorporated in the amount of $58,250 for a sprinkler system for the Division of Police. Number 14, a resolution accepting the bid of Cron International Trucks doing business as Bluegrass International in the amount of $136,202.45 for a knuckle boom truck for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 15, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an engineering services agreement with CDP Engineers Incorporated for design of the South Elkhorn Trail. Section 3 at a cost not to exceed $33,500. Number 16, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility use contract with the Fayette County Board of Education for the use of the Bryan Station High School auditorium at a cost not to exceed $263.38. Number 17, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Bluegrass Green Works Incorporated, $1,200, and Metropolitan Women's Club Incorporated, $600 for the office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. Number 18, a resolution amending Section 1 of Resolution Number 479, 2008, to amend the hourly rate for probationary employee Thad Scott Engineering Technician Grade 111 in from 16.108 hourly to 15.642 hourly in the Division of Water Quality effective August 18, 2008. Number 19, a resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Andre Scott, Public Service Worker Senior Grade 107 in, 15.954 hourly in the Division of Water Quality effective October 13, 2008. Andia Thomason, Child Care Program Aid, Grade 1079, 14.078 hourly in the Division of Family Services effective October 13, 2008. Christine Meyer Hustler, Grade 104 in, 11.810 hourly in the Division of Police effective September 29, 2008. Sean Gatewood, Public Service Worker Senior Grade 107 in, 13.231 hourly in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry effective October 13, 2008. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Susan Lamb, Council Clerk, Grade 118E in the Office of the Council Clerk effective October 1, 2008. Ratifying the probationary sworn appointment of Kevin Kidd, Police Sergeant, Grade 315 in, 27.013 hourly in the Division of Police effective October 13, 2008. Approving leave of absence for Angela Haley, Certified Medical Assistant, requests seventeen-day council-approved leave without pay from September 19, 2008 through October 5, 2008. Approving the unclassified civil service appointments of Amelia Thornton, Clinical Services Manager, Grade 117E, 200637, 28 bi-weekly in the Division of Adult Services effective September 29, 2008. Scott Kelly, Social Worker Senior, Grade 113E, 100346, 35 bi-weekly in the Division of Adult Services effective September 29, 2008. Adrienne Shelby, Deputy Coroner, Grade 112 in, 14.600 hourly in the Office of the Coroner effective October 13, 2008. Jessica Landham, Deputy Coroner, Grade 112 in, 14.600 hourly in the Office of the Coroner effective October 13, 2008. Number 20, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Ad Success for the Mobility Office Marketing Campaign at a cost not to exceed $40,400. 21, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Kentucky World Trade Center Lexington Incorporated for the provisions of services at a cost not to exceed $115,000 FY 2009. 22, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Bryan Station Van Association, $625 for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sum stated. 23, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute lease agreements with the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, Bluegrass Community Action Agency, National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, Elders' Crafters' Community Reinvestment Alliance, Legal Aid of the Bluegrass, Lexington County Urban League Incorporated, Lex Care, Area Health Education Center, and West End Community Empowerment Program for the Use of Space at the Black and Williams Neighborhood Center. 24, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility use contract with the Fayette County Board of Education for use of facilities for the Extended School Program and Recreational Enrichment and Learning Program at no cost to the government. 25, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute contracts with Andover Neighborhood Association, $9,340. Ashland Park Neighborhood Association, $3,000. Charleston Woods Homeowners Association, $2,500. Eastlake Neighborhood Association, $300. Fire Brook Homeowners Association, $3,000. Gratz Park Neighborhood Association, $4,995. Hamburg Homeowners Association, $8,000. Mare Haven Homeowners Association, $8,630. Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association, $3,610. McConnell's Trace Neighborhood Association Incorporated, $7,822. Park Place Neighborhood Association, $350. Shriners Neighborhood Association, $4,975. Southern Heights Neighborhood Association, $3,000. The Cottage of Liberty Woods Incorporated, $1,138. And Westmoreland Neighborhood Association, $9,340 for carrying out various neighborhood activities and improvements at a cost not to exceed $70,000. 26, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number 1 to the Engineering Services Agreement with Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated, formerly known as FMSM Incorporated, for additional work on the Loch-Lamond Drainage Improvements Project, increasing the contract price by the sum of $7,340 from $60,000 to $67,340. Number 27, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements from George D. and Ann M. Robinson for the property located at 2299 Brandon Road for the South Elkhorn Forest Main Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $15,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. 28, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying permanent sanitary sewer and temporary construction easements from RSCS LLC for the property located at 4454 Claysmill Road for the South Elkhorn Forest Main Project, and authorizing payment in the amount of $20,000 plus usual and appropriate closing costs. 29, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to approve renewal of aircraft liability insurance for the term of October 21, 2008 through October 21, 2009 with ACE USA at a cost not to exceed $19,080, and authorizing payment to Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Agency Incorporated on behalf of ACE USA. Number 30, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from the Friends of Lexington Mountain Police Incorporated for conference registration and lodging for use at the 2008 North American Police Equestrian Championship at no cost to the Urban County Government. And Number 31, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from Windstream Communications of 100 First Alert WX-17 radios for use during National Preparedness Month at no cost to the Urban County Government.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions? Thank you very much, Mr. Councilmember Beard. Is there a second? I heard a second from Councilmember Crosby. Any discussion? All in favor of approving those resolutions then, please indicate by voting aye electronically. All opposed, vote nay electronically. And Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Crosby? Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson? Sorry. Gotta get these genders. Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stenit?
Ma'am.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blevins?
Aye.
And Mr. Blues.
Thank you. Those resolutions are approved. We're now ready for the first reading of resolutions. Madam Clerk.
A resolution accepting the bid of RJ Corman Aircraft Maintenance LLC in the amount of $107,000 for helicopter main rotor blades for the Division of Police. Number 33, a resolution accepting the bid of Crytex LLC establishing a price contract for manhole leveling system and supplies for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 34, a resolution accepting the bid of Weisong Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $320,245 for thermal imaging system for the Division of Police. Number 35, a resolution accepting the bids of Advanced Construction of Kentucky LLC, Benjamin Franklin Plumbing, Lighthouse Plumbing LLC, and Mulligan Plumbing Incorporated, establishing price contracts for plumbing services for the sump pump redirection program for the Division of Water Quality. Number 36, a resolution accepting the bid of Bill Waits Countryside Ford in the amount of $55,146 for 2009 Ford F-450 trucks for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Number 37, a resolution accepting the bid of LM Asphalte Partners Limited doing business as ATS Construction, establishing a price contract for the 2008, 2009 City Streets resurfacing for the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry. Number 38, a resolution accepting the bids of Polydine Incorporated, Atlantico, South Carolina, and Ashland Incorporated, establishing price contracts for polymer flocculants for the Division of Water Quality. Number 39, a resolution accepting the bid of Louisville Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of $148,000 for the Glendover Tennis Court renovation for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number 40, a resolution accepting the bid of Public Diesel in the amount of $17,606. thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars for a multi-use power unit for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Forty-one, a resolution accepting the bid of Chum Chestnut Excavation and Construction, establishing a price contract for bulb-out insulation for the Division of Traffic Engineering. Forty-two, a resolution accepting the bid of Meyer Truck Equipment, establishing a price contract for a dump body for the Division of Facilities and Fleet Management. Forty-three, a resolution accepting the bid of bids of GT Distributor Distributors of GA Incorporated and Gauls Incorporated, Aramar Company, establishing price contracts for police car consoles for the Division of Police. Forty-four, a resolution accepting the bids of Allied Technical Services Incorporated, ITT Flight Corporation Dewatering Division and Service Pump and Supply Company, establishing price contracts for pumping services for the Division of Water Quality. Forty-five, a resolution accepting the bid of Gray Bar Electric in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars for replacement circuit breakers West Hickman for the Division of Water Quality. Forty-six, a resolution of the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government relating to the issuance of the by the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority of Revenue Bonds to finance and refinance, among other things, costs incurred by Baptist Healthcare System Incorporated in constructing and acquiring certain hospital facilities in the Urban County and waiving review by the Industrial Revenue Review Board. Forty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a contract with the U.S. Department of Agriculture for participation in the U.S. Department of Agricultural Commodities Program at no cost to the government. Forty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with Fayette County Public Schools and the University of Kentucky pertaining to the cooperative purchasing of environmentally friendly or green commodities as part of the Bluegrass Partnership for a green community at no cost to the government. Forty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement and a lease agreement with Lexington Fayette Animal Care and Control LLC for animal control services at a cost not to exceed one million seventeen thousand twenty dollars. Fifty, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a purchase of service agreement with Lexington Fayette Animal Care and Control LLC for administration of this Bay and New to Grant Fund and Program. Fifty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a prescription benefit services agreement with Caremark LLC to administer the pharmacy benefit from November one, two thousand eight through October thirty-one, two thousand eleven. Fifty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with the Commonwealth of Kentucky Kentucky State Police for viewing and selecting helicopter surplus parts at no cost to the government. Fifty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Internal Revenue Services Criminal Investigation for reimbursement expenses to the Division of Police at no cost to the government. Fifty-four, resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a lease agreement with AIDS Volunteers Incorporated for the lease of Urban County Government property located at eight fifty-one Todd's Road. Fifty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a lease agreement with AIDS Volunteers Incorporated for the lease of Urban County Government property located at eighteen oh seven Dalton Court. Fifty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with AIDS Volunteers Incorporated for extension of the agreement for operation of a tenant-based rental assistance program through June thirtieth, two thousand nine. Fifty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to a lease with ICANS Office Solutions Incorporated for additional copier items at a cost not to exceed four hundred and fifty-six dollars and ten cents. Fifty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the Department of Law on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a deed from Cowgill Partners Limited, excuse me, Cowgill Partners LP for a permanent drainage easement at twenty-five fifty Winchester Road and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute the deed of easement to certify the consideration at no cost to the Urban County Government. Forty-nine, fifty-nine, a resolution changing the street name and property address numbers of twelve oh five North Broadway to two oh eight Legends Avenue and Legends Lane, uh, five oh one, five oh five, five oh nine, five thirteen, five seventeen, and five twenty-one Douglas Avenue to seven fifty-one, seven fifty-five, seven fifty-nine, seven sixty-three, seven sixty-seven, and seven seventy-one Douglas Loop, uh, five oh one, five oh five, five oh nine, five thirteen, five seventeen, and five twenty-one Glen Arvin Avenue to six fifty-one, six fifty-five, six fifty-nine, six sixty-three, six sixty-seven, and six seventy-one Glen Arvin Circle, uh, twenty-one seventeen Fort Harrods Drive to thirty-one four oh one Lyons Drive, uh, seven seventy-nine Newtown Pike to one Imperial Court, uh, set three seventy Price Road to nine fifty-five Whitney Avenue, uh, four sixty Price Road to four ten Greenwood Avenue, uh, thirteen hundred and thirteen oh four Trent Boulevard to twenty-eight thirteen and twenty-eight seventeen Sticks Court, and of thirty-seven oh four, thirty-seven oh eight, and thirty-seven twelve Trent Circle to twenty-eight oh nine, twenty-eight oh five, and twenty-eight oh one Sticks Court. And changing the property address numbers of four forty-seven through four fifty-one Ash Street to four fifty-one Ash Street, uh, thirty-two sixteen Bracktown Road to thirty-two seventeen Bracktown Road, uh, seven sixty-nine through seven seventy-one Breathed Avenue to seven seventy-one Breathed Avenue, uh, nine thirty-five nine through nine thirty-seven Charles Avenue to nine thirty-seven Charles Avenue, uh, seven thirty-seven Florence Avenue to seven thirty-five Florence Avenue, uh, fourteen oh eight through fourteen thirty-six North Forbes Road to fourteen twenty-two North Forbes Road, uh, four thirteen through four seventeen Georgetown Street to four seventeen Georgetown Street, uh, three seventy-one Glen Arvin Avenue to three sixty-nine Glen Arvin Avenue, uh, three hundred through three twenty Hickory Street to three three oh six Hickory Street, uh, six fifty-seven through six 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 fifty-seven through six seventy-nine Kennedy Road to six seven three Kennedy Road, uh, fourteen thirty-seven, fourteen forty-five, fourteen oh one through fourteen thirteen, and fourteen seventeen through fourteen nineteen Leestown Road to fourteen thirty-nine, fourteen forty-one, fourteen oh one, and fourteen seven Leestown Road, uh, three twenty Lima Drive to two fifty Lima Drive, uh, four thirty-five through four thirty-seven Lindenberg Drive to four thirty-seven Lindenberg Drive, uh, seven thirty-six Lockmere Place to seven thirty-four Lockmere Place, uh, four thirty-nine, three thirty-one through three thirty-three, and five oh one through five oh three Newtown Pike to four twenty-nine, three thirty-three, and five oh one Newtown Pike, and of eight thirty-six Whitney Avenue to eight forty-six Whitney Avenue, all effective thirty days from the date of passage. And there's a motion on number sixty, please?
Councilmember Henson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend item number sixty under first reading of resolutions to add the probationary civil service appointment of Meredith Nelson, Deputy Council Clerk Grade One Sixteen E at seventeen seventy-nine point twenty biweekly in the Council Clerk's Office effective October twenty-eighth, two thousand eight. So moved.
I have a motion, but Councilmember Henson, and a second, but Councilmember Crosby. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. While opposed, no. Motion carries.
Resolution number sixty is amended. A resolution ratifying the probationary civil service appointments of Lori Hammond, Account Senior Grade One Sixteen E, two thousand three eighty-four sixty-one biweekly in the Division of Accounting, effective October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight, Betty Landrum, Buyer Senior Grade One Sixteen E, one thousand one nine, one thousand nine thirteen eighty-two biweekly in the Division of Purchasing, effective October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight, Kenneth Johns, GIS Specialist Grade One Fourteen In, twenty point one five seven hourly in the Division of Computer Services, effective October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight, Anthony Welch, Radio Electronics Specialist Grade One Seventeen E, two thousand one fifteen thirty-eight biweekly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight, Susan Bush, Director of Environmental Policy Grade One Twenty-two E, three thousand seven thirty-three seventy-six biweekly in the Division of Environmental Policy, effective October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight, Jody Evans, Heavy Equipment Heavy Equipment Technician Grade One Thirteen In, one nineteen point six thirty hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight, David Poole, Treatment Plant Operator Grade One Thirteen In, twenty-one point one sixty-three hourly in the Division of Water Quality, effective October twenty-seventh, two thousand eight, Shepard Avery, Equipment Operator Senior Grade One Oh Nine In, twelve point three thirty-six hourly in the Division of Waste Management, effective November tenth, two thousand eight, Constance Kell, Revenue Compliance Auditor Supervisor Grade One Sixteen E, one thousand nine oh three eighty-five biweekly in the Division of Revenue, effective October twentieth, two thousand eight, Meredith Nelson, Deputy Council Clerk Grade One Sixteen E, one thousand seven seventy-nine twenty biweekly in the Council Clerk's Office, effective October twenty-eighth, two thousand eight, ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Mitchell Kuiper, Equipment Operator Senior Grade One Oh Nine In, in the Division of Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective November fourteenth, two thousand eight, Freddie Pensinger, Equipment Operator Senior Grade One Oh Nine In, in the Division of Streets, Roads and Forestry, effective October thirty-one, two thousand eight, Jonathan Cole, Electrician Grade One Fourteen In, in the Division of Water Quality, effective October fourteen, two thousand eight, ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Mark Blankenship, Fire Major Grade Three Eighteen In, the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective October fourteen, two thousand eight, Carl Hauntz, Fire Captain Grade Three Sixteen In, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective October fourteen, two thousand eight, Brian Dawson, Fire Lieutenant Grade Three Four Fifteen In, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services, effective October fourteen, two thousand eight, approving unclassified civil service appointment of Cheryl Mack, Custodial Worker Grade One Oh Two In, eleven point oh four four hourly in the Division of Family Services, effective October twentieth, two thousand eight. Number sixty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with the Fayette County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, the Kenton County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and the Commonwealth Attorney of Twenty-Eighth Judicial Circuit for services under the two thousand seven Project Safe Neighborhood Program at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars for the Fayette County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, twenty thousand for the Kenton County Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and twelve thousand dollars for the Commonwealth Attorney of Twenty-Eighth Judicial Circuit. Sixty-two, a resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of excess general reliability, excess automobile liability, excess public officials liability, and excess law enforcement liability insurance through the Kentucky League of Cities from Insurance Company of the State of Pennsylvania and AIG Group for the term of November one, two thousand eight through November one, two thousand nine at a cost not to exceed five hundred and eighty-eight thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the same. Number sixty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute the proposal from MXI Environmental Services LLC for household hazardous waste fall haul at a cost not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Sixty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the Department of Law on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a letter engaging the law firm of Landerman Charles LLP to represent the interests of the Urban County Government in an insurance coverage dispute. Sixty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute the Internal Revenue Service sponsor agreements and civil rights assurance with which are attached here to and incorporated herein by reference for volunteering income tax assistance programs at the Gainesway Empowerment Center, the Central Kentucky Job Center, and the Family Care Center at no cost to the Urban County Government. Sixty-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Windstream Kentucky East LLC for relocation of utilities for the Claysmill Road Improvements Project at a cost not to exceed seventy-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Excuse me. Number sixty-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Columbia Gas of Kentucky for relocation of utilities for the Liberty Todd's Road Reconstruction Project at a cost not to exceed ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. Sixty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an agreement with Windstream Kentucky East LLC for relocation of utilities for the Liberty Todd's Road Reconstruction Project at a cost not to exceed sixty-nine thousand five three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Number sixty-nine, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute agreements with Lex Arts Incorporated, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars YMCA of Central Kentucky, sixteen hundred dollars in Kentucky Blood Center Incorporated, one thousand dollars for the Office of the Urban County Council at a cost not to exceed the sums stated. Seventy, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a federal equitable sharing agreement and certification with the Federal Government Department of Justice for participation in the federal equitable sharing program at no cost to the government. Seventy-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute an amendment to agreement with the Fayette County Commonwealth Attorney's Office for an additional ten thousand dollars for the cold case squad project and extending the agreement through June thirtieth, two thousand nine at a cost not to exceed an additional ten thousand dollars. Seventy-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility use contract with Fayette County Board of Education for the use of Norworthworthy Auditorium at a cost not to exceed four hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. Seventy-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a facility use contract with Fayette County Board of Education for use of the Jesse Clark Middle School Gymnasium at a cost not to exceed four thousand three hundred and four dollars and seventy-six cents. Seventy-four, resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute change order number three to the contract with BDC Incorporated for Acton Park Pavilion, increasing the contract price by the sum of nine thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents from one hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars to one hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Number seventy-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a partial lease of easement, releasing a portion of sanitary sewer easement on properties just south of Patch and Wilkes Drive, at no cost to the Urban County Government. Seventy-six, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement for the property located at eighteen twelve Versailles Road for the Catholic Diocese of Lexington for Cadent Town Versailles Road Sanitary Sewer Project at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Seventy-seven, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement for the property located at eighteen oh eight Versailles Road from Mark G. Smith for the Cadent Town Versailles Road Sanitary Sewer Project at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Seventy-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement for the property located at eighteen oh six Versailles Road from Mark A. Still and Linda Still for the Cadent Town Versailles Road Sanitary Sewer Project at no cost to the Urban County Government with usual and appropriate closing costs. Seventy-nine, a resolution amending Section One of Resolution Number Five Sixty-two, two thousand seven, which authorized the direct which authorized and directed the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a certificate of consideration and accepted deed conveying a permanent sanitary sewer easement and temporary construction easement for the property located at twenty-eight fifty-two Liberty Road for the Cadent Town Sanitary Sewer Project to change the name of the grantor from Dennis Anderson to Anderson Homes for Rent LLC. Number eighty, a resolution amending Section One of Resolution Number Five Seventy-One, two thousand eight, relating to a pay increase for a full-time for all full-time non-contract bargaining unit employees whose hourly rate is of pay is less than the living wage, changing the rate of pay from eleven fifty hourly to eleven fifteen hourly. Eighty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor
Excuse me, Madam Clerk.
We have a motion to amend eighty-one.
Councilmember Stennett.
I move to amend number, or item eighty-one on the docket under first reading of resolutions to delete the positions of life skills program specialists and inmate services supervisor from those positions, transferring to hazardous duty pension coverage, as one position is not eligible for coverage and the other position no longer exists. So moved.
Did I hear a second from Councilmember Myers? You've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that amendment to item number eighty-one, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, number eighty-one is amended. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf and the director of the Division of Budgeting on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute all necessary documents and to take all appropriate measures to transfer the positions of Director of Community Corrections, Assistant Director of Community Corrections, Community Corrections Major, Community Corrections Captain, Community Corrections Lieutenant, Community Corrections Sergeant, and Community Corrections Officer to hazardous duty duty pension coverage in the county employees' retirement system effective upon date of passage. And number eighty-two, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept a donation from the Lexington Legends of thirty-seven hundred many police toy cars for the use at the Division of Police Community Services Section at no cost to the Urban County Government.
Thank you very much. Those are the resolutions entitled to first reading. Are there any motions?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules and give second reading for number sixty-four, please.
Is there a second? Councilmember McCord? Councilmember McCord?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules and give second reading, number seventy, please.
Mayor.
Councilmember Beard?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to suspend the rules and ask for a second reading on both number thirty-nine and number forty-six, reason being, construction projects that were during winter and I'd like to get into those, I think, before the snow starts flying, if it starts flying.
Councilmember Myers?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules and give second reading to number sixty-five, and the reason being is that tax season's coming up and we need to get this agreement signed so we can get some training in place and prepared to go. Thank you.
Any Councilmember Henson?
Mayor, I'd like to suspend the rules, give second reading to number sixty, on request from the Council Clerk's Office.
Thank you. Councilmember Blues?
I'd like to add forty-eight, fifty-one, sixty-two to the administration. Thank you, Mayor.
Forty-eight, fifty-one, and sixty-two. Any others? Councilmember Blevins? Councilmember Blavens?
I'd like to suspend the rules for number sixty-three in order to maintain our timing on the hazardous waste fall hall, please. Number sixty-three.
Thank you. All right, let's go through the list and make sure I have them all here. I have a motion to suspend the rules, grant second readings to items thirty-nine, forty-six, forty-eight, fifty-one, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, seventy. I believe that's it. Did I miss any? All right, those in favor of suspending the rules to give second reading to those items, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam Clerk.
I hate to ask you to do this, but do you mind to go over those numbers just one more time?
Sure.
I don't want to read the wrong ones.
Thirty-nine, forty-six, forty-eight, fifty-one, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, seventy, and that's it.
Okay, number thirty-nine for second reading, a resolution accepting the bid of Little Paying Company Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the Glendover Tennis Court renovation for the Division of Parks and Recreation. Number forty-six, a resolution of the Lexington Fair and County Government relating to the issuance of, by the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority of Revenue Bonds to finance and refinance, among the other things, costs incurred by Baptist Healthcare System Incorporated in constructing and acquiring certain hospital facilities in the Urban County and waiving review by the Industrial Revenue Review Board. Forty-eight, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a memorandum of agreement with Fayette County Public Schools and the University of Kentucky pertaining to the cooperative purchasing of environmentally friendly or green commodities as part of the Luger S Partnership for a Green Community at no cost to the government. Fifty-one, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a prescription benefit services agreement with Caremark LLC to administer the pharmacy benefit from November one, two thousand eight through October thirty-one, two thousand and eleven. Number sixty, a resolution ratifying the probation of civil service appointments of Lori Hammond, Account Senior, Grade One sixteen E, two thousand and three eighty-four, sixty-one biweekly in the Division of Accounting effective October twenty-seven, two thousand and eight. Fatty Landrum, Fire Senior, Grade One sixteen E, one thousand and nine thirteen eighty-two biweekly in the Division of Purchasing effective October twenty-seven, two thousand and eight. Kenneth Johns, JIS Specialist, Grade One fourteen N, twenty point one five seven hourly in the Division of Computer Services effective October twenty-seven, two thousand and eight. Anthony Welch, Radio Electronics Specialist, Grade One seventeen E, two thousand and one fifteen thirty-eight biweekly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective October twenty-seven, two thousand and eight. Susan Bush, Director of Environmental Policy, Grade One twenty-two E, three thousand and three seven, three thousand and seven thirty-three seventy-six biweekly in the Division of Environmental Policy effective October twenty-seven, two thousand and eight. Jody Evans, Heavy Equipment Technician, Grade One oh thirteen N, nineteen point six thirty hourly in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective October twenty-seven, two thousand and eight. David Poole, Treatment Plant Operator, Grade One thirteen N, twenty-one point one sixty-three hourly in the Division of Water Quality effective October twenty-seven, two thousand and eight. Shepard Avery, Equipment Operator Senior, Grade One oh nine N, twelve point three thirty-six hourly in the Division of Waste Management effective November ten, two thousand and eight. Constance Cale, Revenue Compliance Auditor Supervisor, Grade One sixteen E, one thousand and nine oh three eighty-five biweekly in the Division of Revenue effective October twentieth, two thousand and eight. Meredith Nelson, Deputy Council Clerk, Grade One sixteen E, one thousand and seven seventy-nine twenty biweekly in the Council Clerk's Office effective October twenty-eight, two thousand and eight. Ratifying the permanent civil service appointments of Mitchell Kiper, Equipment Operator Senior, Grade One oh nine N, in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry effective November fourteenth, two thousand and eight. Freddie Pincinger, Equipment Operator Senior, Grade One oh nine in the Division of Streets, Roads, and Forestry effective October thirty-first, two thousand and eight. Jonathan Cole, Electrician, Grade One fourteen N, in the Division of Water Quality effective October fourteen, two thousand and eight. Ratifying the permanent sworn appointments of Mark Blankenship, Fire Major, Grade Three eighteen E, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective October fourteen, two thousand and eight. Carl Hauntz, Fire Captain, Grade Three sixteen N, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective October fourteen, two thousand and eight. Brian Dawson, Fire Lieutenant, Grade Three fifteen N, in the Division of Fire and Emergency Services effective October fourteen, two thousand and eight. Approving the unclassified civil service appointment of Cheryl Mack, Custodial Worker, Grade One oh two N, eleven point oh four four hourly in the Division of Family Services effective October twentieth, two thousand and eight. Sixty-two, a resolution authorizing and approving the purchase of excess general liability, excess automobile liability, excess public officials liability, and excess law enforcement liability insurance through the Kentucky League of Cities from Insurance Company of the State of Pennsylvania and AIG Group for the term of November one, two thousand eight through November one, two thousand nine at a cost not to exceed five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the same. Sixty-three, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to accept the proposal from MXI Environmental Services LLC for household hazardous waste fall hall at a cost not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Sixty-four, a resolution authorizing and directing the Department of Law on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a letter engaging the law firm of Landerman Shouse LLP to represent the interests of the Urban County Government in an insurance coverage dispute. Sixty-five, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute the Internal Revenue Service sponsor agreements and civil rights assurance which are attached heretofu and incorporated herein by reference for volunteer income tax assistance programs at the Gainesway Empowerment Center, the Central Kentucky Job Center, and the Family Care Center at no cost to the Urban County Government. And number seventy, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor on behalf of the Urban County Government to execute a federal equitable sharing agreement and certification with the federal government Department of Justice for participation in the federal equitable sharing program at no cost to the Urban County Government.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve those resolutions? Councilmember Blues has moved to approve them. Councilmember Beard has seconded that motion. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll, and members, please vote aye. If you support those resolutions, vote nay. If you oppose them electronically.
Ms. Crosby? Mr. DeCamp?
Yes.
Mr. Ellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Henson?
Yes.
Ms. James? Mr. Lane? I'm sorry, he's absent. Sorry about that. Mr. McCord?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Dr. Stevens?
Aye.
Mr. Stenit?
Aye.
Mr. Beard?
Aye.
Mr. Blavens?
Aye.
And Mr. Blues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those resolutions are approved. We're now down to item seven on the agenda. A motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Brown would be in order.
I still move.
I move we approve the appointment of Mr. Brown.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stevens has moved, and Councilmember Beard has seconded the motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Brown to the Board of Adjustment. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. I have one other minor communication from the mayor. You'll be receiving a letter shortly, but on the Friday after the election, November seventh at nine o'clock, I'd like to invite the members of the council to come to the twelfth floor for coffee and donut get-together with members of the old council and members of the new council. So, if you'd mark your calendars now, we'll have something in writing to you shortly, but I wanted you to be aware of that. November seventh, nine o'clock, on the twelfth floor. There's a report from the Division of Building Inspection that I believe has been circulated. Are there any announcements from the council? Seeing none, that takes us down to the public comment section. Now, we'll have the public forum on the smoking ordinance in just a moment. Are there any comments other than those pertaining to the smoking ordinance?
Your Honor and members of the council, I think that much as I am eager to see Newtown Extension get built and have fought for years to get it built and donated a lot of my vacation time and my weekends toward whittling away the opposition's favorite excuse, building that one project does not make it okay to shrink any of the existing streets in our downtown or to change one ways to two ways if that throws away capacity. If anything, with all the redevelopment that's going on, we need our downtown streets made bigger. We need dead-end streets turned into through streets in the areas adjacent to downtown on all sides whenever an opportunity arises, such as extending Fifth Street across the Eastern State Hospital property when it gets redeveloped into a community and technical college. I would point out that the community and technical college would definitely generate more traffic than the mental hospital does now. All the apartment complexes that have been built just south of downtown definitely generate more traffic, and for that matter, more sewage, than the tobacco warehouses that were torn down to make room for them. I mean, with all the fuss that's been devoted to Center Point, I mean, that's just one building. We've had a lot more places where density has been increased over what was there before, and packing more density into a confined area doesn't really get you off the hook for needing to provide more infrastructure because unfortunately, it means putting more load on the existing streets than what they were sized to handle, more load on the existing And if you guys want the city to grow vertically instead of horizontally, well, the infrastructure to support it needs to do likewise in some fashion.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCarthy. Mr. Moore, I understand you wish to speak.
Eric Patrick Moore, two oh seven Cassidy Avenue. And I was trying to get Vice Mayor Yates to come because she gets extra time, I noticed, to speak, so, but she didn't want to come out again. Anyway, I wanted to follow your rules and not speak on Center Point itself to a public hearing on Tuesday, so I hope I get a pat on the back for that. Anyway, the real conversation I noticed was the work session Tuesday afternoon when Vice Mayor Gray and Councilmember McCord had a little discussion about what's actually able to be talked about during the public hearing on the Tiff Development Plan, and that's what I believe is the real issue for our Lexington if we can focus on what I believe is the real issue for all of us in the entire world, as a matter of fact, and that's our economy in general, our economic landscape, from Main Street literally all the way to Wall Street to London, Paris, Tokyo, Sydney, and so forth. I think that we all understand that our economy is easily the most important issue, maybe of our lifetimes, as a matter of fact. Having said that, I've noticed throughout the whole entire Center Point conversation, and I know that I am talking about that, that discussions have largely been about outward appearances, how tall the building is, what it looks like, historical value, and all the aesthetics, so to speak. And those things are great, and I understand that architects and historical preservationists and developers and people can argue those points endlessly, and that's great, and there's a point for that. But I would say the bigger issue is actually the inside, internal contents of our downtown. Especially now we have an empty city block, and I understand the rules of the game, but it seems like we have unlimited potential right now, considering our major, probably the, maybe the crisis of our lifetime, the economic environment of our world, we had the chance now to build something that truly could transform our whole entire economy, similar to the way Silicon Valley was started, as a matter of fact, in those dire economic times after World War II. We had the chance of a lifetime to do something great. And so I would just, again, I'm encouraging that, to focus on what we can really do, especially on the inside, maybe the next Altech or the next Biofuel Mecca, which I've talked about these things before. But it does seem to me that we do have some incredible resources and an incredible opportunity of our lifetimes right now to synergize. We have two Toyota facilities in our state of Kentucky, in Covington and then Georgetown. We have Altech right next door. We have the second, the second largest agricultural base outside of Mississippi. We have Chris Kimmel, we have Dr. Lyons, we have Dr. Todd, we have Jay McCord, who's an idea. We have great people on this council. We have a lot of great resources and the opportunity and the challenge of our lifetime to do something great. If we could just, as Chris Kimmel always says, if we could just use our imaginations, and I believe above all else, as Joe Graves said, I love that word, he said, he beseeches you. I beseech the conversation to be about what can we do to transform our economy, to help all two hundred and eighty thousand, and even the entire state, which is, I believe, is the forty-first poorest state in the country, as a matter of fact, if I said that right. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. I don't have anyone else who has indicated a desire to speak on anything other than the smoking ordinance. Is there anyone else who might wish to do so? Okay. Very well. We have a couple of police and fire matters to pick up, I understand. Chief Aides, please.
The Division of Fire has recommended a written reprimand for firefighter Jamie Tinsley for having an at-fault accident with a vehicle as a result of carelessness. This is in violation of KRS ninety-five dot four fifty and Lexington Fire Department SOP eight hundred dot zero six. The employee has signed indicating concurrence with this recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellinger has moved to approve. Councilmember McCord has seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving that recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Aides. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Commander Kelly Edwards. An allegation has been made that Officer Travis Overton has committed the offense of improper operation of a vehicle in violation of KRS ninety-five four fifty and General Order seventy-three dash two H, Section one point one three, operation of vehicles. Chief Baston has recommended a written letter of reprimand. Officer Overton has voluntarily accepted the above disciplinary action.
Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Stevens has moved approval. Councilmember Beard has seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Thanks, Commander. Any further business to come before the council? All right, seeing none, we're ready to move to the public forum. I know many of you have already signed up indicating a desire to speak. If you have not yet done so and you wish to speak on the matter of the smoking ordinance, please sign up in the back where Mr. Green is standing. If you'll wave your hand already so everybody will know where to go. What we'll do is just go through the folks who've indicated a desire to speak and do them in the order in which they signed up. We'll ask that you come to the podium, give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes. The timer will be engaged so you can keep track of your time. If the next person will stand by someplace close to the podium there, it will help us to move along. Let me ask David Cassidy to come forward, if you would. Mr. Cassidy, we'll let you go first, and then, just working down the list, the next person I have is Kerry Lester. I don't know if that's Mr. or Ms... Okay, Mr. Lester, if you will stand by. Let me offer one other option. If some of you would prefer to submit your comments in writing, I'm sure we'd be glad to receive those as well. You can leave those with our clerk this evening. Mr. Cassidy?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm David Cassidy. I'm a cardiologist. I've been living in Lexington since nineteen ninety. It's my privilege to ride my bike here, among other things, and as I do so with Dr. Stevens' son occasionally, ride by tobacco fields. And every time I do so, I think, well, there's money in the bank for me because those tobacco leaves are going to be made into cigarettes, which will eventually produce people who have smoking problems and subsequent heart disease. I'm also proud that Lexington has passed some of the first anti-smoking laws in the state and has been a model for the state and the country. I'm happy to be on the staff at St. Joe's Hospital, which, with other hospitals in the city, has passed anti-smoking laws and will expand those to the full campus next month. What I am concerned about is the people who don't smoke themselves but have been exposed to smoking by family members and by their communities. I take care of people who were exposed to smoke from the time that they were infants. I take care of people who were exposed to smoke by their communities. In Scotland, in about nineteen ninety, a large anti-smoking ban was passed, and as a result of that, over two thousand people didn't come into hospitals with heart attacks. Two thousand people who had never smoked themselves who were exposed to passive smoking. The same can happen here. I don't have all the numbers of people who have been exposed to passive smoke. You're probably not interested in that. What we are interested is in the people who don't smoke, who are exposed to it, whose lives can be improved by decreasing the smoke they're exposed to. People who are in bars, people who are in bingo halls, waiters, other people who don't have a choice. We can decrease their risk of heart attacks, we can decrease their risks of emphysema, of other lung problems, of strokes by decreasing their exposure to smoke. If this city would pass an ordinance, completely banning smoking in all these public places, we'd make it even, even better place to live and to be and to breathe. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cassidy. Mr. Lester, if you'd step forward, and then, Dr. Marino, if you would stand by, please. Mr. Lester?
My name is Kerry Lester, and I'm a Public Relations Associate at Central Baptist Hospital, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As a representative of one of the leading healthcare facilities in central and eastern Kentucky, I could stand here and recite figure after figure about the perils of tobacco use to you. But you're civic-minded people, and you already know that tobacco use is the leading preventable cause of disease and premature death in the United States and the most prominent cause of cancer. Instead, I want to speak with you about the merits of leading by example. Central Baptist Hospital has considered going to totally tobacco-free campuses for quite some time now, and we were pleased to join the Kentucky Hospital Association's Tobacco-Free Healthcare Collaborative, which will result in tobacco-free healthcare properties throughout central Kentucky by November twentieth this year. This move, we believe, is a significant step in helping us practice what we preach to our patients and their families when we ask them to adopt healthy behaviors. For years, hospitals in our area have succumbed to the pressures of Kentucky's longstanding tobacco culture and have provided designated smoking areas for patients, visitors, employees, and others. Inside, we had doctors treating people with devastating diseases almost solely caused by tobacco use or significantly related to those smoking habits. Outside, we were saying it was okay to use tobacco as long as you do it in these particular areas. This was obviously sending mixed messages to the public. Those practices will be changing next month so that patients, visitors, physicians, employees, vendors, and countless others who come into our properties will no longer be subjected to discomfort and hazards associated with the use of tobacco products. We are a healthcare facility, we promote healthy lifestyles, and we must lead by example. We were proud when Lexington led the state four years ago in banning smoking in many public areas. We also applauded the city's efforts to promote health and wellness with the addition of bike lanes and recreational trails. We were pleased that the recent Second Sunday effort to promote physical activity was a success. You are leading by example, and now it's time for you, like the local hospitals, to take the next step. We at Central Baptist support the proposed amendment of the city's smoking law that would extend the ban on smoking to include all workplaces as well as public transportation and other public sites. By implementing this ban, you would join the hospitals involved in the Tobacco-Free Healthcare Collaborative and no longer sending mixed messages that it's all right to subject the public to secondhand smoke in certain places but not in others. You would once again be leading by example. Neither our upcoming move to a tobacco-free campus nor your proposed amendment to strengthen the smoke-free law is meant to punish the smoker. As a hospital, we know all too well the powerful addictive qualities of nicotine, and we want to assist smokers as much as possible in overcoming this addiction. These moves are, in the simplest forms, health statements that we are called to act upon.
Mr. Lester, your time has expired.
Okay.
You can wrap up very quickly.
If there's anything we can help you with, please feel free to call on us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doctor, if you'll step to the podium, and Mr. Wright, I see is already standing by.
Yes.
If you could give us your name and address.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman, my name's Dr. David Menino. I'm a pulmonary physician at University of Kentucky. I'm also a professor of the College of Public Health, and I was also a co-author of the two thousand and six Surgeon Generals Report on Secondhand Smoke. And I would also like to strongly support acceptance of the change in these ordinance to strengthen the ordinance to protect people in all workplaces and in public places. And certainly, I think this council made a very courageous decision four years ago to pass the initial ordinance, and over time, we have learned that there are these loopholes in it that I think need to be removed, and this needs to be strengthened. I worked with some researchers at University of Kentucky analyzing what happened after the first ordinance was passed. In fact, we were able to demonstrate, for example, some real health benefits. For example, asthma, emergency room visits, that you would expect to be affected by restricting smoking, were reduced by about twenty percent when you looked at the time period following the ban compared to the time period before the ban was passed. Although, I think there's still some additional room for improvement, and I strongly encourage the acceptance of these changes to the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor. Mr. Wright, if you'll step forward. The next speaker, Ms. Stanhope, I appreciate your standing by.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jerry Wright. I'm an attorney. My address is one forty-eight North Broadway. I represent a group of charities that provide bingo at Eastland Shopping Center. I want to address two issues with you tonight, if I could, please. First is money. Our people donate their time to raise money for extracurricular activities at the schools. It is impossible, and I repeat, it is impossible to sell enough candy bars and fruit to equal the money brought in by bingo. What most of you probably don't know is that the bingo charities are regulated by Kentucky Revised Statute. Each charity, by law, must have a forty percent profit, or they stand to lose their license. Quite frankly, if smoking is stopped at bingo, here's what's going to happen. The players, the bingo players, are going to leave. Their money's going to go with them. The profits that the charities make are going to fall, the charities are going to lose their license, and the money for the activity is going to stop. It's not going to just slow down, it's going to stop. Now, how do you replace this? I've come before this council before and asked you, how do you replace this money? And nobody has an answer for that. You can't pay for it, the school system can't pay for it, so very simply, what happens is the money dries up, the school system's activities suffer. The second thing I want to bring up is litigation. I have been involved in this litigation from the very beginning. The issue of whether the charities are private organizations has been litigated at the Fayette District Court, it's been litigated at the Fayette Circuit Court twice, and it's been litigated at the Kentucky Court of Appeals. During that same time period, this council, on at least one occasion, and maybe two, reviewed the ordinance and did not make any changes to it. Coincidentally, after you lose in court, now all of a sudden, the ordinance needs to be changed, especially as it pertains to private organizations. This change to the private organization definition, in my opinion, is being done merely to attack the bingo charities themselves. That's where that private organization definition fits, and they, those are the individuals that are being attacked by that change. In my opinion, that is special legislation. Special legislation then leads to selective prosecution. I would suggest to you that before you do this, that you confer with your county attorney here in Lexington and with your law department, if you haven't already done so, because I can assure you, from our standpoint, that if this change is made, this will be the next legal battle before the courts as it pertains to the smoking ban. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wright. Ms. Stanhope, if you will come forward, and Lindsey Sugarman, if you would stand by, please. Ms. Sugarman.
Thank you very much. Marsha Stanhope, I'm the current Chair of the Lexington Fayette County Board of Health, and I'm here to represent myself and the Board of Health members. Five years ago, Lexington became Kentucky's leader in smoke-free legislation by becoming the first city to adopt an ordinance preventing smoking in public places, including restaurants. When it took effect a year later, in two thousand and four, the law proved to be the state's gold standard, but time has revealed a few loopholes and omissions that prevent all of our city's residents from being protected. Councilman David Stevens, a noted physician and leading proponent of the smoke-free law, is pushing to strengthen our city's existing ordinance. Dr. Stevens realizes that all workers deserve to breathe clean air and shouldn't have to choose between their lives and their livelihoods. This, of course, should also include all parents and children who work bingo halls in an effort to raise money for booster clubs. Lexington's law, as written, has helped improve the health of the community. A recent report showed a twenty-two percent decline in asthma-related emergency room visits since the law took effect. And while we certainly embrace those numbers, we know they could be even better if our urban county council members extend the law to protect all of Lexington's residents. The smoking ordinance is the single most important thing the urban county council can do to improve the health of the community. The Lexington Fayette County Board of Health gives its full support to Dr. Stevens' efforts in trying to strengthen the smoking ordinance to better protect all of Lexington Fayette County's residents. While the existing ordinance is good, Dr. Stevens' proposed changes make it better, a healthier option for our community. We hope the rest of the council will support these changes, and the Board of Health urges you to pass this revised ordinance. For many years, we have looked at categories of death, leading causes of death in the United States, as heart disease, cancer, and stroke. We know the reality is that those leading causes are smoking, excessive drinking, and either under or overnutrition. We can control these things in our lives, and as we look at smoking, we know that smoking directly affects the health of the individual as well as all of those individuals who are surrounded by and exposed to the smoke from the smoker. While we cannot eliminate smoking totally, we can eliminate the exposure to smoking. And we can especially eliminate it in environments where people gather for work and to do business, to play, to be educated, to engage in recreation, and to engage in fundraising. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sugarman, if you'd be stepping forward, and Mr. Gob, if you would stand by, please.
Hi, I'm Lindsey Sugarman, one three eight Tohoma Road, and I'm the Administrator of the Mayor's Alliance on Substance Abuse and the Fayette County Agency for Substance Abuse Policy. But more importantly, I'm the parent of two teenagers, and I have served as a bingo volunteer. I know firsthand the challenges that face these groups. I know how hard it is, but I also have experienced the oppressive smoke that fills those bingo halls. And actually, I think we all agree that the bingo halls are a health threat. The big question is, what is the impact on the fundraising? Will strengthening the laws cause a decrease in funding for extracurricular activities that really are very important to our young people? Now, I wouldn't be standing here today if I thought there was going to be a bad impact because I've been there, and I know that there are people that cannot afford the fees that would be incurred if we didn't have the fundraising. And I agree that bingo is the best fundraiser we have, but I think that we have to look at the whole picture. And fortunately, a recent study by, of thirteen Kentucky communities shows that the bingo and charitable gaming revenues have not declined when smoke-free laws were implemented. So there's no evidence that bingo would lose money, except maybe with the state of the economy, how we're all losing money. But, you know, this may be counterintuitive, and that's why we do research, because we don't make decisions based on what we fear will happen. We base decisions on what the historical evidence is. Now, I'll admit that when I was doing bingo, I saw the numbers go down when we first implemented the, the smoke-free ordinance. But we didn't keep, we didn't enforce it for long at all, so we didn't see what the long-range impact is going to be. I believe that people will get used to the change and they'll come back. Such was the case in Georgetown, our neighboring community. They enacted laws, people, people didn't come right away, but they came back. These bingo players are a very dedicated group. Smoke-free bingo is not going to keep them away, trust me. Fayette County is surrounded by communities with smoke-free laws, Georgetown, Madison County, Woodford County, Clark County. We won't be losing bingo players to these communities. No one likes change, but people adjust. They won't stay away, and it may even encourage some new players to come, and I know it will include, encourage new volunteers to come out. The smokers can still smoke on the break, and the pool tabs can be sold inside and outside. So it's really a win-win situation. The only difference is that the volunteers and the bingo players will have a healthier atmosphere inside the hall. Bingo will thrive, and everyone will breathe easier. Please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sugarman. Mr. Gob, if you'll step forward, and the next speaker I have is Carmen Cassidy, I believe. If you, you don't wish to speak, all right. Then, is it Roland Berger? Mr. Berger, if you'd stand by. Mr. Gob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member of Councils. I'm Michael Gob, the Executive Director of Bluegrass Airport, and I'd like to start off by saying that Bluegrass Airport was one of the early supporters of the, of the smoking ordinance that you passed some time ago. And as we're going through that process, the airport looked for solutions, looked cooperatively for solutions to accommodate our segment of customers that do, in fact, smoke. Over those years, we worked with some of the best design consultants in the business and have implemented, have constructed, and are using smoking lounges, four of which are at the airport, two are operating to our standards, two are not, one in the public area. The three smoking lounges that operate beyond the security checkpoint are available only to traveling customers. We've made sure that there's no reason to go in that smoking lounge other than to smoke. To give you an example, as we talked about this issue last, one of the issues that the airport has is going through the TSA security checkpoint, once the passengers through the checkpoint, they have very few options as it relates to smoking. Give you an example, on, I believe it was October fifteenth, Continental Airlines' last flight of the day going to Houston was delayed because of a mechanical. That flight was scheduled to leave at six thirty-two PM. At approximately eight PM, the mechanical situation was cleared up, and Continental announced that they had a, an ATC delay, an air traffic control delay of approximately two hours. About the same time TSA announced that they were closing the checkpoint, as they do every night, they don't stay open for delayed, delayed flights. This left those customers with no option but to seek out one of the smoking lounges. In fact, three of the, three of the customers, three of the passengers that were on that flight spent time in the smoking lounge. Leaving the area was not an option for them. Once they got passed through the revolving doors, there was no way for them to be rescreened to enter that area. The airport's gone, gone to great lengths to make sure that our construction segregates the smokers from the non-smokers. John Sloan is here, our Director of Planning and Development, to address some of the, some of the mechanical issues, the construction issues. We also have Steve Rochelle here this evening to address some of the, some of the legal issues or some of the cooperative solutions that may exist for us to achieve your goal and to achieve the airport's goal of accommodating this segment of our, of our guests. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gob. Mr. Berger, if you would step forward, and then, the Net Little, Ms. Little, you would stand by, please. Mr. Berger.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm Roland Berger. I'm a physician, a lung specialist. I've lived in Kentucky for almost thirty-some-odd years, practiced here all, all this time. My wife is from Bath County, my children are born and raised here. They, my daughter played band in Bryan Station, we went to bingo. I wanted to make just two points. I don't want to repeat what everybody else has said, but thirty years of research and experience of this has taught us one thing we didn't know thirty years ago. There is no amount of secondhand smoke that is safe. Any amount can be harmful to an individual. Susceptibilities vary from person to person. We have not developed a way to predict or measure the degree of susceptibility of an individual. Children are markedly more susceptible than adults. Claiming that some people will not be affected, will be akin of me having a gun with six shots, putting only one here, spinning the barrel, and pointing to the room, and pulling the trigger. Oh, it's our five to one, nothing will happen. Will anybody allow me to do that? I think not. That's allowing smoking in a public space where children and adults are exposed involuntarily to secondhand smoke, displaying a Russian roulette with their health. We're betting that somebody will not get sick, somebody will not get a heart attack, somebody will not get lung disease. I don't want anybody taking those kind of chances with my health. I'm pretty sure you don't want that with your health either. There is no punitive measure in this. There is no attack to anybody. There is no attempt to oppress smokers or deny them their rights, but the rights of a person to extend their hand ends where the chin of But the rights of a person to extend their hand ends where the chin of the neighbor starts. You can't do whatever you want to do when you put other people at risk. You have to regulate it. And I strongly encourage you to pass this ordinance. It is a matter of health, and it's a matter of the well-being of our state, our children, and it's a simple, common-sense decision. This is not safe. There is no level to do this safely. It shouldn't be done. It's like driving drunk. There is no way to do it safely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berger. Ms. Little, if you'll step forward, and then Brendan Zahn, if you would stand by, please. I would let everyone know, these are the last names I currently have that have registered to speak. There's one more sheet now advised, so if you bring that forward, we'll be ready to go. Ms. Little.
My name is Vanette Little. I'm an internal medicine physician, and I live here in Lexington. I'm going to be brief, because I think many people have made very good comments this evening. I think that we should also consider that an incomplete ordinance does not do the job that we want it to do in terms of protecting the public health. And as we know that the burden of disease in this state is quite high, it has far-reaching implications with regards to the economy, the status of our healthcare system, the burden upon which we will have to bear because of patients who are being exposed to secondhand smoke and are therefore developing diseases that they themselves did not wish upon themselves. We cannot and would not seek to revoke the right of anyone who wants to expose themselves to the toxic chemicals in cigarettes, to do that in the privacy of their own home, but we would like to make it safe for all those who do not wish to be exposed. Even in the airport, smoking rooms, someone has to clean those rooms. Those toxins remain in the air. There's no way to keep those people safe. And people are very adaptable. They will do what they have to do in order to function. People in the workplace have learned how to cope with not smoking in the workplace, and likewise, people who travel will learn to cope without smoking while they travel. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Little. Mr. Zahn, if you would step forward. The next person I have is Carol Riker. Ms. Riker, are you present? If you would stand by, please. Mr. Zahn.
My name's Brendan Zahn. I live at 3324 Crown Crest Road. As a teenager in high school, I enjoyed playing my French horn for a nationally-ranked high school marching band. It was one of the highlights of my high school career. In order to travel and compete nationally and statewide, it was critical to raise funds, and that was mainly through bingo halls, as mentioned, here in Lexington. And in order to stay such an accomplished musician, I would practice daily, even nights after a four-hour shift, in the smoke-filled bingo halls. Immediately, I would notice difficulties with breathing, keeping up with music phrases, and maintaining stamina to make it to the next note would become very difficult and frustrating. In fact, I would have to wait until the next evening before I could even feel stable enough to breathe normally to practice. But little did I know, at that time, the damaging short-term effects of secondhand smoke on my body. In addition to the acute respiratory irritation, the respirable particles from secondhand smoke and its 250 toxic chemicals can lead to the following detrimental short-term heart effects. As little as five minutes of exposure stiffens the aorta as much as smoking one cigarette. Twenty minutes of exposure can cause excess blood clotting, increasing the risk of heart attacks and strokes. Thirty minutes increases the buildup of fat deposits in the blood vessels, also contributing to heart attacks and strokes. In addition, two hours of exposure increases the chance of irregular heartbeats that can be fatal and, again, trigger heart attacks. Now, as an adult, I am graduating UK's nursing program and starting my career in the cardiothoracic intensive care unit. I see the consequences of these effects, and the outcomes are not pleasing. Although advancement in medical technology has led to promising treatments, it does not negate the importance of prevention, medicine's number-one tool to keeping people healthy and out of the hospital. Everyone in this room today needs to know the destructive but preventable effects of secondhand smoke on the heart. I do not want to see any Booster Club members, volunteers, students, children, or travelers at the airports, or workers in these organizations, exposed to such harmful chemicals in our air and winding up ventilated in a bed on the CTICU. Everyone deserves to breathe clean air. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zahn. Ms. Riker, if you will step forward. The next person on the list is John Sloan. Mr. Sloan, if you'd stand by.
Thank you. Carol Riker, 2714 Stetson Lane, and I'm a faculty associate with the Kentucky Center for Smoke-Free Policy. I want to address some things that we've learned about smoking rooms, and that is that generally, they don't work. We have a classic study from Louisville during their, when they had their partial law before they passed their comprehensive law, where we studied the air quality in an establishment that had a separately ventilated smoking room. And inside the smoking room and the rest of the establishment, the indoor air pollution was virtually the same. So generally, these rooms do not work. Generally, they have high levels of air pollution, and people will have to go in and clean them and be exposed to that air pollution. So I think perhaps we should think about other ways of accommodating travelers. For example, they could take a page from the hospital, Tobacco-Free Collaboratives, with our local hospitals, where we are intending to provide access to NRT, which I believe probably most smokers use for transcontinental flights, et cetera, to keep themselves comfortable. So this could be provided behind the safety checkpoints if they want to accommodate and care about their customers. Just to remind you all, the Surgeon General has said there is no safe level of secondhand smoke, so every worker in the traveling public do deserve to breathe smoke-free air. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Riker. Mr. Sloan, if you'd step forward, and then Mr. Harriman, David Harriman, if you would stand by.
Hi. I'm John Sloan, Director of Planning and Development at Bluegrass Airport, and I would like to briefly summarize the testing that has been done of our lounges, our four smoking lounges at the airport. We were approached by Dr. Ellen Hahn of UK College of Nursing and the Clean Air Indoor Partnership, who performed testing inside and outside of all four of our smoking lounges over a fifteen-hour period on four separate days. They were primarily concerned with if there was any leakage at all from the lounges, and as such, they placed their meters, which measured fine particulate matter, eight to 12 inches from the doors. The four lounges, the one in the public side of the airport, directly across from the airline ticket counters, approximately seventy smokers were recorded during that entire day. We did have one exceedance of the National Outdoor, National Air Quality Standard for outdoor air, which is 35 micrograms per cubic meter of 39, which does not appear to be associated with a peak in smoking activity inside the room. The three lounges on the secure side of the airport, Concourse B, the newest of all four lounges, which was built when Concourse B was constructed, approximately 140 smokers were recorded during that fifteen-hour period. There was no temporal association of presence of secondhand smoke outside of that lounge during that day, even though that is the most heavily-used lounge at the airport. And again, the highest recorded reading outside the lounge during that day was 22 micrograms per cubic meter. In the executive lounge, which is also on the secure side of the airport, probably one of our least-used lounges, but it is utilized by our premium customers, those who belong to airline business clubs and our club at the Bluegrass. Only thirteen smokers were recorded in that room, although there was some temporal association of leakage outside the room when the smokers were in the room. There were no exceedances of the 35 microgram per meter National Air Quality Standard for outdoor air. In Concourse A, which is utilized primarily by the TSA employees and a few passengers, although there are no airline activities currently operating out of Concourse A, this lounge was probably the one that operates least effectively for us. There were four exceedances of the 35 microgram per cubic meter during that lounge. And then we also had the OSHA run an air quality survey, and OSHA's results were that there were no exceedances of the air quality standards that they set. In fact, the carbon dioxide levels, which they measure outside of our smoking lounges, were approximately half of what an acceptable range would be.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Mr. Harriman, if you'll step forward. Mr. Rochelle, if you'll stand by, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is David Harriman. I live at 1053 Albert Lane. My issue is primarily an issue of liberty and freedom, and I would just like to ask each council member, as you consider this law, that you consider, where are we going to draw the line? Where is it that we're going to finally say, this is where government doesn't intervene in our lives anymore, and here's where it does? I would like each of you to ask, what is the role of government? I admit, smoking is dangerous. I don't think anybody really doesn't think that's true. But what is your role in protecting us out in the public from that? If your role is to protect us from every danger there is, then we're going to lose all our liberty, because then you get to tell us exactly how we live, what we eat, what we drink, and we could take this to the extreme. I'm sure that automobiles create a much bigger hazard than cigarettes do in secondhand smoke. And as the gentleman referred to, the revolver and spinning it on the secondhand smoke issue, if it came down to freedom, I would say, let's spin that revolver, and let's maintain our freedom, and let's limit where government gets involved in our privacy and our civil rights. So I'm asking you to think about what Benjamin Franklin said, which was, "He who would give up any of his liberty for the sake of safety deserves neither." And what he meant by that was, is freedom and liberty is a risk, and it is well worth the risk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harriman. Mr. Rochelle, if you'll step forward, and Mr. Lane, Bruce Lane, you will stand by, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. I am Steve Rochelle. I represent the airport authority in this matter. I'm with the law firm of Stites and Harbison. I've been asked by the airport to express to you Stites and Harbison's legal opinion as to whether or not you can have an exception for the airport. We believe that you can, and I'll go through that briefly in just a moment. It's interesting to me that, four years ago, when you all adopted this ordinance, you did not regulate your subdivision, if you will, the airport. You elected not to do that. And what did your subdivision do? I submit to you, they've been the most responsible public entity that wasn't regulated in the entire community. You've heard described today that we've had the smoking rooms for quite a while since the ordinance was adopted. May have had it before then, I do not know. You've heard that the air quality has not been materially impacted by the use of the smoking rooms. And I think that says a lot for the airport, because we believe if you can carve out an exception, you should carve out an exception, because, please remember, we have one airport in this community, Commercial Airport. In probably sixteen or seventeen contiguous counties, it's used. It serves the public, not only the nonsmokers and the skinny people, but it also serves smokers, overweight people, a diverse community, and we're trying to provide that service to everyone. Now, we are not here to advocate smoking, certainly not, but we are here to tell you that you have the authority to carve out an exception for the airport, based upon the following. Number one, you do not have to regulate the airport at all, and I think, by their evidence today, they have been very good stewards of the air quality at the airport. Now, there has been a statute change, and you may choose to regulate the airport. And the issue that was brought to me today is, the law department here is saying, "We have to treat you just like everyone else." We disagree with that. The new statute says that you may regulate any building. It doesn't say you shall or must regulate all buildings at once, and we would ask you to look to that exception. We are unique. We serve a diverse community. With the TSA delays, and the waiting delays, and then the occasional breakdowns and being on the planes, you're talking many hours for people who unfortunately are addicted to tobacco. And when you're addicted to something and you don't have that, then you become edgy, and you don't become the best passenger in the world. We would like to discuss this further with your law department, but we would most certainly want you to know and recognize that you do have the power to grant an exception to the airport and to regulate the airport from this diet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rochelle. Mr. Lane, if you'd step forward. I only have one other person who signed up to speak. That's Ms. Miller, Margaret Miller. If anyone else wishes to address the council, please sign up with Mr. Green. Mr. Lane?
Thank you. My name's Bruce Lane, and, first of all, I don't smoke. I've never smoked. Nobody in my family smokes. I don't own a business that would be adversely impacted by this, but I'm here tonight because, as much as I don't like smoke, I dislike tyranny even more, and I think there are some serious liberty issues at stake here. There are two primary issues, I think: Individual rights and property rights. And I'm sure you've been through this four years ago, but I think it deserves your attention. Property rights. Somebody owns a piece of property. What does that mean? They should be able to do what they want on that property, as long as it doesn't adversely affect anybody else. It seems unfair to me that a business wouldn't be allowed to enable smoking on their property for themselves, anyone who wishes to participate. People are free to choose. Individual rights. I don't think it's right for a council to tell people, individuals, "You can't smoke because we don't think it's good for you." There are a lot of health risks with smoking. Nobody denies that, but at the same time, there are health risks with a lot of things we do. I don't get enough exercise. I should. Are you going to make me exercise regularly? What about eating vegetables? I mean, where does this end? It's a very slippery slope. This country's not a democracy, for a good reason. Our founding documents were designed to prevent a tyranny of the majority. The Kentucky Constitution or Bill of Rights addresses this particular issue in Section 2, "Absolute and arbitrary power denied," in which it states that "absolute and arbitrary power over the lives, liberty, and property of free men exists nowhere in a republic, not even in the largest majority." Basically, to me, that means the tyranny of the majority. Not everybody can decide for the few. Certainly, people have the right to breathe clean air, but I think no place in Lexington is that a problem right now. I really don't see this as an issue. Perhaps in the '50s it was, but I'm unable to avoid cigarette smoke at any time, should I so choose. So really, all I'm asking you is that, please, before passing any new law, ask yourself if it violates our United States Constitution or our Kentucky Constitution. I urge you to adhere to the letter of the law, as well as the intent of the Kentucky Bill of Rights, because if this is not absolute and arbitrary power over the lives, liberty, and property of a free people, then I don't know what is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Ms. Miller, if you'd step forward. Does anyone else wish to address the council? Stand by, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I need to make just one sort of technical point. Earlier this evening, as the... Earlier this evening, as the first reading was occurring, I noted that there is an error in the draft or in the proposed ordinance. And I apologize that I didn't catch this sooner, but I want to call it to your attention and ask that this mistake please be corrected. Section 1498.4 of the proposed ordinance mentions that the Lexington Fayette Urban County Government Council can adopt a written policy pursuant to KRS 61.165.3A, Section 1 or 2. That is an error, and again, I apologize, but it should read Section 3A or B. So I'm just not quite sure the proper procedure to bring that to your attention and get that mistake corrected, but there is an error there.
We changed that earlier.
Sir?
That was changed earlier.
Section 3, it now says 3A or B?
Yes.
I'm sorry, then the section I had still has 3A, 1 or 2. Sorry.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Hahn, does anyone else wish to address the council this evening? Then Ms. Hahn, you'll be our last speaker.
Sure. Good evening, mayor. Council members, Ellen Hahn, live at 1844 Blairmore Court in Lexington. I wanted to address Mr. Sloan's report of our report. We did do an air quality report in the Bluegrass Airport and presented it to the airport on October 6, 2008. We did find that the fine particle air concentration in the smoking, inside the smoking rooms, was significantly higher than the outdoor air standard. I might tell you that there is not an indoor standard. Mr. Sloan referred to OSHA, who did another assessment. OSHA is not the authority on indoor air. In fact, they defer authority to the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, and to ASHRAE, which is the Association for Heating and Refrigeration Professionals. And so, OSHA does not test fine particulates like we have done. He also said that the secondhand smoke did not leak in that room that where you go immediately outside security, and it did. We found significant leakage of particulate matter in three of the four rooms in the airport. We did find also that there were very few smokers in those rooms. We were there for fifteen hours, on average, in all four of those rooms, and there were very, during those four days, there were very few smokers there. And so I guess what I'm arguing is that we're serving a very few while putting many workers and patrons at risk of exposure. I also want to tell you that we've done a literature review on all of the studies we could find on these kinds of rooms, and we found a few things that I think are important to note. One is, these rooms need to be maintained carefully over time, meaning that people need to get in there, change the filters, make sure those ventilation systems are working, and it costs money to do that. And also, that the longer they're in place, the more they leak. He was correct that the one in Terminal B, we did not see a significant, we didn't see leakage in that room, and that's what we did find. We did find significant leakage in the other three, however, and that's the newest one, the one in B is the newest one, the Terminal B. I'm sorry, Concourse B. And also, we have to remember that the maintenance was deemed adequate. They had the maintenance folks look at those rooms before we went in, and they deemed them adequate. And so, we found leakage under the best conditions, okay? And so I guess that's my major point to make today, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me express appreciation to all of you for being here tonight and for being interested enough in your community to come and share your views with me, with us all. We will certainly be glad to receive any written comments that you might have as well. If there's no further business, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Councilmember Myers, and a second by Councilmember Blevins that we adjourn. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you very much.